Good morning. We'll call the February 20, or February 19th meeting of the Pennington County Commission to Order, and we'll stand for a moment of silent reflection and the pledge led by Commissioner Troutman.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's get his commissioner. Thank you. The next item is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they wish to make to the agenda? Dustin.
Good morning, commissioners. Item 15A, the general fund supplement, I'm still waiting for about three quotes back from vendors, so if I could continue that to the March 5th meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other changes to the agenda? If not, the Chair would entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve the agenda, removing A of item 15.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second to amend the agenda and approve it. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda. Holly?
Good morning, commissioners. Holly Hinnies, Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-contributial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today, I've placed the following items for your consideration. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of February 5th, 2013. Approval of the vouchers in the amount of $2,330,212.24. To approve the budgeted operating transfer to the healthcare trust fund as submitted by the auditor. To approve the adopt a highway application for Lightning Ridge rottweilers for a two-mile section of Nemo Road. To recognize the volunteers for the month of January 2013 as submitted by Human Resources. To approve a motion to update slash create the Pennington County campus emergency plans. And finally, to approve the Chairman's signature on the warrant of appointment for weed and pest Board Member Danny Mann to fix a grammatical error.
Is there anyone who wishes to remove any items from the consent agenda? If not, the Chair would entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Again.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as printed. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is item 12. The first reading and public hearing to amend county ordinance number 12. And I thought there was something in our packet that said it would be withdrawn.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Jay Alderman, the State Attorney's Office. Good morning.
Good morning.
With regard to that item, I've been in contact with the air quality division from Rapid City. Our highway department had some comments on the draft ordinance that the state has an interest in discussing further before we present that to you for a first reading. So the request is to basically continue this first reading indefinitely until we can put it on the schedule when we know that we've had everybody had an opportunity to review it, make final comments, and then get it back to you. So there's still a couple of things we need to work out with just our county highway state regulations and the way the ordinance is written. I think we can work that out here shortly, so.
Thank you, Jay.
Yep.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
So the motion needs to be continued indefinitely?
Rather than continue it to the next meeting, which we may be able to have it ready by then, but rather than go through this and just soon have you continue it indefinitely so that it's not a set schedule, and when we have it ready to go, we'll approach the, we'll go through Holly and get it on the agenda for a first reading. And it, we might be able to do that by March 4th, is it? But.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to continue this item indefinitely.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to continue item 12 indefinitely. Any discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is item 13, the Rapid City Public Library Update. Dr. Cole.
Good morning. I'm Vera Cole. Our report for the library this year is, as you recall, a couple of years now, the library has been changing the way that it renews its accounts. And so now, all the inactive counts have been purged. And so the counts are more accurate than they have been over the past two years. So as you can see, this shows that, you all have the data here, and the table shows the Pennington County users that are not Rapid City residents. And the numbers have increased as they have consistently. So there's a 13% increase in the number of Pennington County residents over, from 2011 to 2012. And overall, there's a 35, 5% increase in the volume of materials used by the Pennington County residents. So the important number is up at the top where it shows that the county residents now make up 18% of the total library users. We have reason to believe that number might go even higher, that the new Western Dakota Tech branch has opened, and it's been far more busy even, I think, than anybody anticipated. So are there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You know, Vera, one thing that might be helpful, I see how, maybe, maybe next time, if, okay, we're at 18%, it'd be kind of nice to know what it is the last couple of years. It's, you know, this is, not, I'd like a percentage. I mean, I get number of users, but I'd like a percentage such as the 18% for the last seven, maybe three years. So like if it was in 2010, 12%.
Sure, you just want, you want to see a trend over that. And I think, yes, we can get that for you for next time.
Percentage, if we're going to deal with percentages.
Percentages, right.
Would be kind of nice, rather than the numbers.
Right. And I think that's, that's been the difficult part because over the past two years, the library has changed the way that the cards are renewed. Everybody used to get their renewal whenever they signed up. And so you had cards renewing throughout the year, and it was difficult to keep track of when to purge those accounts and all that. So now everybody's been put on an annual calendar, so it all gets renewed at the beginning of the year. Every card is kept for, it has a two-year expiration period. So it.
I get that, but.
I know, I know. And it's, it is hard to keep track of that.
It just feels like if we're going to be asked to deal with it on a percentage basis, then it's only fair for us to have history on a percentage basis.
Right, right. Is there anything else you would like to see?
Any other questions by the commission? I do have a couple of questions. In the last paragraph above the graph, or the first chart, it references the, what I consider to be computer-type material.
Correct.
And it indicates an increase in downloadables, online database usage, and social networking.
Right.
And I guess my conservative bias says that I don't see any need for taxpayers to be paying for social networking. And in that respect, is there a way to determine that usage by itself as opposed to truly library-type activity?
Well, I think, I understand your concern, but social networking is kind of a wide, it encompasses a lot of things.
Yes, I'm sure.
Things, things, if you're familiar with, for instance, a website called LinkedIn that might be considered social networking, and that's actually used for professionals to make business contacts and look for employment opportunities. So although that would fall under a social networking category, that's really not that. It's, it's more, you know, it would be like for an employment contact kind of situation. And as you know, the library use is just changing dramatically overall. Far fewer print materials are being checked out by everybody, and because you can access these things online. So you have downloadable ebooks. That's just the trend. So I will find out. I know that the downloadables can be separated from computer usage. I don't know if they can separate what patrons are clicking on, whether it's, you know, research database versus any other webpage.
Thank you.
So I will look into that.
Anything else? If not, thank you. Next item, we're about five minutes, four minutes early, but I think Julie can fill in the time till 19.
Good morning. Julie Pearson, Pennington County Auditor. I can take item B, if you prefer, first.
That'd be fine.
As the Board is aware, every, we try to have a tax deed auction every year. We just didn't have time to, and we usually do it at the end of a, of a year, so it's easier to add taxes on or take them off because the timing is just better. We, however, didn't have time to do this with the other auction that we were having, and so this is our annual tax deed list. The information is presented, this is the Board's opportunity to review the list. The motion needed is to declare the property surplus for the purpose of placing them up for auction at a tax deed auction at 10:00 a.m. on March 20th. And also, the Board needs to tell us if they want to set any property minimum bid. Not usually done, but you may, you most certainly can pick any of them and set a minimum bid. All this information, every piece of property has a file on it. It's all the information that we have on it. We scan all that. All this information is on the webpage.
Where would the auction be?
It's held in the County Commissioner's Room.
Any questions by the commission?
Mr. Chair. Julie, on the second page, there's a piece of property, 802 Talent Street, taxable value 97.5. That, is that a, a home and?
I, I'm not familiar with, with what each piece of property is.
It's a fairly high taxable amount. Now, I, I guess my concern would be if it would be sold for 50,000. I don't know that that's such a good thing.
Well, we have one piece of property that has been condemned by the city. It's been on the front page of the Rapid City Journal the day we took it. And there is another one, it, with that kind of value, it, it leads that there is something on that piece of property since it's in Robbinsdale. But you could go look at the files on the webpage. I just don't know them individually. You can tell from the tax deed number, the, the first two digits are the year. So some of them we've, we've been, we've taken quite some time ago. And they're private roadways, and they just don't sell. But previous Boards has wanted us to reissue those up for sale, just in case somebody wants to buy them.
Mr. Chairman. Yes. Can we do something else with those? We've, I mean, these 25-foot-wide private driveways, since 1999, no one has bought them. And I got a hunch we're not going to have anybody jump up and really have a bidding war on them this year. Can we just get a hold of the neighboring property and say, here, we just attached it to your property? We gave it to you. Can we do that? I don't suppose.
Donate it to someone?
I don't imagine we can, but.
They're not going to want it because nobody wants to pay the taxes on it, and they're using it for free.
They're using it anyway. My suggestion used to be that we make a toll road out of it and make them pay.
Not a bad idea.
We talked about that before.
You can decide to take them off the list, but.
You know, never get rid of them. You, you indicated the matter of setting a minimum bid, and then you just said you could take them off the list.
Yes.
What's the timetable for doing either or both of those things? Do we have to do it now, or can we do it between now and the 20th?
No, we need to do it at today's meeting. We have to publish all of this in the paper.
Okay. So what's the wish of the commission? Mr. Chair. Yes. Julie, do we have to set a minimum bid, or can we allow staff to just?
You do not have to set a minimum bid, and rarely have you, since we do it at an auction.
I'd make a motion to declare the property as listed as surplus property and for the purpose of placing them up for auction at a tax deed auction on 10:00 a.m. on March 20th, 2013.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we're back to item A.
Yes. The budget supplement on the, from emergency disaster funds for the use in the early 2013 mountain pine beetle funding. This is the time for the public hearing to supplement the 2013 emergency disaster mountain pine budget in the amount of $80,303 from restricted fund balance.
Okay, any discussion?
This will get the mountain pine beetle committed contracts paid through this season.
Mr. Chair. I, kind of my idea, or at least I made the motion, I think, last time, so I'm going to vote for it. But I think that it's time that we stop spending money. We've got a sequestration coming up in about two weeks, and it's going to happen. And I think we're all going to be very surprised at how much money that's going to cost us. In the paper, the other day, they were talking about school districts and how much they're going to lose. I think we're going to lose a bunch of money. And I think it's time we maybe have the department head sit down and say, give us a list of how much money they think they're going to lose because I think it's going to get very serious when that happens. But, you know, this is, this comes from a special fund. It's maybe a little different story. I, I think we better start watching what we're doing, too.
This only expands the budget through this, if you call, flight season, and the Board needs to address and fund if you want to start that back up in December, or, excuse me, in September.
Any further discussion? Scott, do you have anything you want to say, or?
Scott Guffey, Pennington County Weed and Pest Director. I will give you an update on where we're at. You know, if that's state legislation, HB 1050 passes, we should be sitting pretty good. And I don't foresee dipping in any additional funds in where we're sitting now, so. Kind of hinges on that legislation, so.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the supplement to the 2013 emergency disaster MPB budget in the amount of $80,303 from restricted fund balance.
Is there a second? I will second that. Motion and a second to approve the, the supplement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll give you that information, Nancy, on that piece of property.
Okay, thanks.
Next item is item 15B, with 15A having been deferred until March 5th.
Once again, good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Dustin Willett, Director of Pennington County Emergency Management. I won't take up too much of your time this morning. If you recall, when I was appointed to this position a little over a year ago, the administrative assistant position turned in a resignation and left a rather scathing exit interview that, that was the point of contention for a while. And I came up here and asked you to give me a year to evaluate that position in my department and how things were working out. I'm a little over a year. I've tried to get this on the, the agenda a couple of times and just haven't, haven't made it happen. So I just wanted to take a couple of minutes this morning and give you a brief rundown of where we're at with that position in my office. In a word, I can tell you, or a couple of words, I can tell you that my, my office certainly needs that position, and we certainly make tremendous use of Jean. She's an incredible asset to us. In 2012, the months of 2012, one of the things I did in order to track this was, was implemented a new time sheet software. It's a web-based time tracking software where I can actually track, you know, what people are doing during those times so that I can, can get an overall picture of what the office is doing. And with that, 67% of Jean's time in 2012 was spent on emergency management and homeland security issues. And I can go through line item by line item and tell you exactly what those hours were spent on. So 67% of her time was spent on, on HLS and emergency management issues. We've got two programs that she's integrally involved with. Responder credentialing countywide and the hazardous materials right to know, maintaining a database and providing that information through the local emergency planning committee. Jean pretty much manages those two programs by herself with, with support from the rest of the staff. But those two things probably wouldn't be happening anywhere close to the degree that they are with, without her at the wheel of those two projects. She's also been very involved in our Public Safety Education Consortium that we started, and then our new specific needs registry that we're, we're trying to reach out and maintain a database on people in the community in Pennington County that may need extra assistance during times of disaster. So that, along with the fact that all of our staff members in emergency management are now current in their, their state local agreement mandated training, and the Office of Emergency Management is current on its state and local agreement mandated plans. So we've, we've come a long way. 2012 was a busy year. As I've said multiple times before you, there's, there's more work than can ever get done. We just chip away at it a little bit every day, and Jean's incredibly beneficial to that. The only other thing I can mention to kind of highlight the need for that is, is I'm making more use of interns. There's a lot of individuals out there that need to get internship hours in, in support of online degree programs that they're taking. So there's a lot of individuals in our community that are taking online degree programs in emergency management. Those degree programs require that they have some type of, of actual involvement in emergency management. So it's a win-win. I, I get some hours from them as, as volunteers and interns, and they get to meet that degree requirement for their, for their institution. In 2012, I worked with, with three interns, one of them on a, on an ongoing basis, and we have over 200 hours volunteered from those interns in 2012 that, again, all contributed to the work that we're doing. So not only was I able to use Jean as much as Denny would let me have her, and Alexa to, to the fullest extent that she's available as well, but in addition to that, over 200 hours in volunteer hours and interns. So we're doing good things. We're, we're heading in the right direction, and I couldn't be happier with the, the staff I have and the support from the commission. So just wanted to give you that update. I told you I'd come back in a year and let you know, and, and I'm here to tell you that I could use several more of Jean, but I'm not going to ask for that. Be happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions? I guess the question I would have is, is, and maybe Nick's involved in this. The administrative assistant position, is that one that exists in your budgeting? And it's a matter of identifying an individual to fill that position, or where are, where are we there?
It's a shared position between county fire and emergency management, and it's filled. The, the problem was that the outgoing person in that position made some remarks when she left that questioned the validity or the need for that position. And the Board was gracious enough to allow me to fill that position a year ago, and I just wanted to assure you that that was the correct decision and that we, we continue to use her and will need her in the future, certainly.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commission? If not, thank you, Dustin.
Thank you for your time.
Next item is items from equalization, item 16A.
Good morning. Director Rittberger wasn't able to be here this morning, so I will handle this item for him.
You got one of the guys in the back room, the back there from equalization.
Good morning, Harvey Kessler. I am the Deputy Director of Equalization. Shannon isn't going to be in the office this morning. He asked me to come over if I could answer any questions for you. Last month, it was brought to his attention that we'd had this manufactured home burned in August of 2011, and he asked me to write up an abatement for the taxes from the day that it was burned. We didn't find out about this until January, and that's why we had 2012 taxes already on the books that needed to be abated.
Any questions by the commission?
Just one, Mr. Chair. Harvey, I presume that with the abatement of this, that all portions of the school taxes will transfer to the balance of the taxpayers in Pennington County to recoup that?
I am not sure how that works, Mr. Davis.
That's the way it is.
We, we, we hear that, but, you know, the taxes are just gone away, unfortunately.
Make a motion to grant the abatement. There's motion and a second to grant the abatement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Harvey. Next item, 17A.
Good morning, again. Do you guys have a copy of the email I sent out yesterday on the budget breakdowns? If not, I got additional copies here. Looks like you guys, has everybody got one?
Yeah.
Okay. If we look at the, I'll just give you a quick update on where we sit on the budget. After approved vouchers today, we'll have about 90,000 remaining through what's left out there to be cut. And if HB 1050 passes within the next couple of weeks before our next round of vouchers, those expenses will actually qualify for the state fund, so we could actually maybe save that emergency disaster dollars till this fall if need be. So it's, we had a meeting, Commissioner Troutman and I, with State Forestry last Wednesday, and they kind of went through on what qualified for cost and in-kind. Sounds like in-kind's pretty wide open, as long as it deals with pine beetle somewhere in some fashion. Highways, Hines work on highway right-of-way, clearing trees would qualify. My time, even like municipalities within the county that are doing something, even the public utilities. Anything that's done within the county, we can basically use that as match, so that's going to help us on leveraging those state dollars. So if and when the Governor signs it, hopefully soon, that's when we can start drawing off that, those dollars, and we can actually ask for a 20% advancement on those dollars, so that could help pay for these bills coming up in March. On the old funds, pine beetle funds, we got about $29,000. That was at $52,800 and whatever. After today's bills, we took out of there in the $60,000, that was in the general. So, that leaves $29,000 in the old Title III funds. Title II funds, that $1,400, that was the rack dollars that we applied for. We got $1,400, but they made a motion, the Rack Board did, that any remaining unspent funds from the other projects will go into that pine beetle project. So, there could be a windfall there. I haven't heard how much that's going to be. I think the deadline for those dollars to get them granted out is September, so, or I think actually maybe June or July 1st. So, we'll find out then. Then the emergency disaster funds and then the new Title III dollars. It's kind of gray. If pine beetle is approved use on those new Title III dollars, what we did last year, the $20,000, that was in search and rescue, which is definitely a black and white approved use, we transferred, because that $20,000 in search and rescue is actually old dollars, we switched that out and put the new in and put the search and rescue back into the old and we put it into pine beetle. So, that's something we could look at doing again this year if there is an event that search and rescue uses those dollars. Otherwise, if we don't use that dollars by September 1, we lose it. State Otter is going through those, our previous years, new Title III dollars that we used on and we should get clarity there if we can continue to use those new Title III dollars. So, we might be coming back and switching those allocations around. The tree spraying, that's $20,000 we could save. That's not approved use on the state funds. We could use that as match. Last year, we did earmark $20,000 to do a cost share for like the Hill City Deerfield, the heavy impacted landowners, we did a 50-50 cost share up to $100. So, that's something we could cut out this year and save $20,000 to use actually into mitigation and on match and we can adjust that a later date. The main thing I wanted to go over is the funding on the projections on the grant dollars and how that would shake out. When it was originally introduced, it was $2.5 million and each county kind of put in how much funding they needed of the five, or of the five counties. And then that was reduced once the $2 million was, once the $50 million, or 250 was reduced down to $2 million. It was kind of reduced down proportional to each county. So, Pennington County is kind of earmarked for $670,000. And if you look at that spreadsheet there, the top one is if we'd match it with dollars funds and it would come out to a little over a million on the project. But as we know, as we've been going through, we got a shortfall in funding. So, if we do all in-kind, which we could come pretty close to meeting that even with, even with what we're paying out the remaining of this year, we would be pretty close to what we did this year as far as cutting trees and stuff. So, I would imagine we're going to probably end up somewhere right in the middle there. I just wanted to come up in the board, in front of the board today and make sure you guys are comfortable with that on the grant application, asking for $670,000. There might be some switching of funds. Some counties might want some more. I know Custer County was earmarked with only $50,000. They've indicated they'd like a little more of that funding. Mead County's got $400,000. They've kind of indicated they don't know if they can spend that much and if they have that much matched, match that, those dollars. So, there could be some switching around some funds. We're meeting, we're going to go over all the grants and kind of how it's going to be divvied out at the February 28th Pine Beetle Working Group meeting. So, but I just wanted to keep you guys up to date and apprise on what's going and where we're at.
Yes.
Do you anticipate spending all of this in calendar year 2013?
We have the state dollars. We have till June 1 of 2014 to spend it. So, it would take in basically September through that March 1 control flight.
Obviously, the match that you've listed over here is, that's all going to be expended in 2013.
Yeah, in 2013, yeah.
But that'll carry.
But that's, those state dollars can carry over into 2014, so.
Any other questions or comments? Did the Department of Corrections guy get hold of you?
Yeah, he left a message and I called him back and left a message. We're playing phone tag, but we'll try to connect and see if we can utilize them as well.
Yeah, just for the information, the rest of the board, they, can't think of his name right now, but the fellow in the Department of Corrections who handles the inmate work that was done in Custer State Park stepped forward and offered to do what he could and whatever works out was caught, so.
Yeah, we can see if we can utilize them for sure. All right, thank you.
Thank you Scott. Next item is items from the chair and at this point, I don't have anything. If I think of something later on, maybe the board will let me inject it. Item 19, the Spring Creek Watershed and Implementation Project, item A.
Good morning. Brittany Molitor, Water Protection Coordinator. This was continued from the February 5th County Board Meeting. There were some questions on the Advisory Group Guidelines as far as on Section 2 under authority. I believe Mr. Grody had contacted you about the authority.
I think you've all, Jay Alderman again with the State's Attorney's Office, I think you've all received a memo on that. Essentially, the Advisory Board is just that. It's an advisory board. I know it was appointed by the commission, but that in and of itself doesn't make it a public body. So, strictly speaking, the advisory board is not subject to the open meetings laws. You can certainly make it so, or you can do some hybrid thereof. And in the memo, I think you received some suggested different language that you could insert in the guidelines that could simply allow, frankly, as I understand it now, the public has been welcome if they show up to the meetings in Hill City. I don't know, Brittany could probably tell us if there's minutes that are kept or if it's audiotaped or if there's a video of meetings. Posting could be done differently if you wanted to make it strictly subject to open meetings law. But since it is not, it doesn't, you know, the advisory board doesn't exercise any of the sovereign power of the county commission. That's one of the absolute mandatory requirements if it's a public body and it doesn't. It's strictly a body that recommends, makes recommendations. As that, as you know, a committee or a task force or in this case, an advisory group, when they make recommendations, as you're aware, historically, you have to wait till the next regular meeting of the county commission to take action on that. And part of that is just logical, it makes sense. If it's not open to the public, the public wouldn't know what the recommendation is or what they've been discussing until they show up at the first county commission meeting and thus, the reason for a two-week delay in our case, because you meet every two weeks. If you were to make them subject to the open meetings law, then they would be treated like any other public body, subject to open meetings law. And in that sense, then, you wouldn't have to do the two-week delay because the public would be there to observe and witness that and you could act on their recommendations immediately when they bring it forward because that lack of information, the public is no longer there, if that makes sense. So, there's some trade-offs and so forth, but I guess the point of this today is to just let you know, they are not subject to the open meetings laws. You can make them, subject to them if you want, or something in between where you simply post their meetings and say the public is welcome, but they're still not exercising and subject to all the laws of a public body. I'm trying to answer, if some of that's confusing, I'll try to clear that up.
Mr. Chairman. Yes. Do you, Brittany, do you currently publish the notice of the hearing and is there something that takes minutes?
We do not publish it formally. We do put it on our website. It is available. There's multiple emails that go out notifying people that, you know, we're having that meeting. There is audio taken and there's meeting notes essentially that's taken and usually that's done by Mrs. Marti with the Black Hills RC&amp;D.
Are they transcribed?
She just puts them, yes, in like a, she keeps them typically and if I ask for them, she can give them to me and if we go to the meeting, she has them available from the prior. We don't like approve them or anything. It's just, you know, informational.
I'm afraid if, you know, I like, I would have liked the one that says, "The advisory group will conduct its meetings in compliance with SDCL 1-25," but then that means we're going to spend more money in notices in the paper and...
There'd be a publication cost.
And publication of the minutes.
So, I guess frankly, I don't, I don't know that there's been any issues with the way they've held their meetings. They could certainly post at no additional cost. You can post just like you do for your meetings right out here, could probably post at the location of the meeting in Hill City. It would still be on the website, so all the notice would be there and to the extent members of the public are interested in attending those meetings, they've been welcome and they continue to be welcome. Any recommendations that came out of those meetings would be presented to the board like they have been and you'd have the two-week delay. But with, that just kind of formalizes who they are, how they're open and would not add any additional cost to the existence of that committee.
Any other questions or comments? Did he do it okay Patrick? Did Jay do all right? So, the question is whether or not the board adopts what's on newspaper?
Correct. Approves those guidelines or you could approve them with one of the changes or under authority that we post the meetings on the website and then at the location of the meeting in here within a certain amount of time if that's what you choose. So, it's, you know, open and available to as many people as possible.
Mr. Chair, I guess I'd like to go with the, I'll make a motion to, to say that the advisory group is not subject to the provisions of SDCL 1-25. However, the meetings accepted for executive sessions are open to public attendance unless closed by majority vote and the agenda for upcoming meetings shall be posted on the Pennington County website.
And the only thing I would add to that Commissioner Troutman is if you also, if you want, besides the website, for a posting of the meeting to be...
I'll make on our bulletin board, sure.
And your choice could be here and at Hill City or just here.
So, we could say wherever. It doesn't cost us anything.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The only thing I would like to see is that they be posted here because they have that meeting in several different locations. We've had them in the bank, we've had them in the Super 8 motel up there in their meeting room, we've had them in the Slate Creek Grill meeting room upstairs, we had them in the city council chambers in Hill City. So, it'd be a little difficult to post those in those public places in the restaurants and things, so.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Next item, item B.
Then item B, staff is requesting a motion to create the Spring Creek Advisory Group and to appoint the following organizations and/or individuals to the advisory group. We're requesting that four property owners, Mr. Brett Stinson, Mr. John Niemila, Mr. Ron Roskineck and Ms. Mary Jo Marcy represent the four property owners. Pennington County would be myself, Brittany Molitor and the Planning Director, Dan Genison. Black Hills Resource Conservation and Development, Tammy Marti. The City of Hill City, I did get contacted by Mr. McMackin on Friday and he would like to be the designated member on that advisory group. The Pennington Conservation District, Mark Kiefer and Suzanne Cook. South Dakota Game Fish and Parks, I did not receive any response from them to date. John Kurio has represented Game Fish and Parks since 2010. The United States Geological Survey, Galen Hogestrot. The United States Natural Resource Conservation District, Matthew Oden and Paul Bolton. The United States Forest Service, Deanna Ryer and Les Gonye. And the West Dakota Water Development District, Denise Livingston.
Okay, any questions or comments? Mr. Holloway.
On the ones where you have two people representing one of the organizations, is one of them an alternate or are they both going to be on there?
Typically, one attends, but in the instance, the other, usually with the Forest Service, both Deanna and Les attend, but typically, there'd only been one.
Well, in our membership designation, we have three landowners and nine agencies and I, see now, we put four landowners on and we're putting multiple people on. So, how many people you want on this committee?
Well, we only want the agencies are essentially represented. So, if there's, the two of them attend, that's only one, only one of them can be, they would have to designate in their agency who would be the primary person.
So, do we want them, or I guess in the membership, it says at least three, so if we went to four, we're probably all right.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, Dan Richer, Area 2, West Dakota Water Development District. I'd like to withdraw Ms. Livingston's name from the list as the board has not met and the board will not meet until the third week of March. So, West Dakota won't be represented until we can get a board meeting.
Mr. Chair. Yes.
Dan, did you have a board meeting that authorized you to ask for that withdrawal?
No, we didn't have a board meeting.
So, you're acting, you're acting for the board unbeknownst to them, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, where did we come up with the name then?
Sorry, Holly, I think Ms. Livingston contacted Holly.
Yeah, Ms. Livingston contacted me and the contract that West Dakota signed with her organization, she is designated as the representative, is what she indicated to me.
IRA, CAA, something like that.
Yeah, it was Midwest Assistance Program. I'm not sure what it is now, Rural Assistance, but she indicated is, it is in the contract that West Dakota signed that she is the designated individual to represent that organization. So, that was per a phone call with her last week.
Thanks. Are you comfortable with that Dan, in terms of, are you aware of the contract?
That contract was apparently signed before I was put on the board.
I see.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would think that if we, if we leave her on so that we can make this complete, if West Dakota Water Development District comes in later and wants to change that, it'd just be an action of the board. I mean, it's...
I would think that would be true, yes. I would think that would be true, yes.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the list as presented by Brittany.
Hello, excuse me?
We have a motion and a second. Okay. Do you want to address the motion?
I wanted to, you had asked for comments, and I'd like to make a comment. All right, before you make the motion. Thank you for letting me speak. And I just wanted to bring something to your attention. There's other water groups out there that are looking at this, this project here as well, that would be interested in possibly making sure. What I'm concerned about is Reese Beck is the only person out there with his brother making the report to do these tests. And there's some other water groups out there that want to be involved in the testing on a voluntary basis. They've, they've formed an organization, and I would like to bring that to your attention and, and have them, if you're going to have this advisory board, which I totally object to, but if you're going to have it, then if you have another entity that is not getting money from this project, then I would, I would like to see if you guys would consider that.
You want them on the advisory board?
Yes.
Well, I think that's somewhat problematic, but I think the decision as to how much testing and the, who does the testing would be a recommendation of the advisory group. And so your, your request at this point, I don't think we can deal with it as a board today. But it will be noted.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Number 20, request to waive requirements for road construction within a section line right of way.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Dan Holsworth addressing you. Sometime back, we came in with a building permit for this building. And of course, within construction, with the cover letter, I've kind of explained where we're at with that. And after putting the building up, it seems that if we were able to utilize the section line, it would service my company a little bit more easily for a service area to come in to the back of my yard of what we're developing at the building itself. With the requirements that you have at present, of course, to turn the application into the planning board, I have to have an engineered plan. And what we're doing is we're only going to be doing about 980 feet, and that would include the approach coming off. And I have included, and I believe you have them, maps of where the property is located there on South Highway 79 and where we would be coming off of 79 onto it. We have, of course, DOT approval with the approach at presence and had that within the building permit portion of it. And with the 980 feet, the only service would be for my building and for the landowner that adjoins me, Mr. Johnson, excuse me, Johnson, which they only have is ag land and service with cattle is the only thing that goes on in that portion of it. Had talked to Mr. Johnson, Johnson, Mr. Johnson doesn't have a problem with that. In coming through and discussing it with the county, they felt I would be better to come to you folks first, see if we can waive that engineering requirement to develop this. And of course, then there will be some other stipulations in the ordinance that I'm going to ask for waiver after we get through this part of the phase also. I have also talked to the highway department about this and what we would be doing on it. And I believe Heine is comfortable with where we came to on the agreement of what we were going to do for the development of this also.
Okay, any questions? The, the access to Highway 79 is the same that's been there?
Correct.
All along?
Correct.
Yeah.
None of that will change.
And so then the, the road along the section line, is that the fence line on the west side of the building?
Correct. The fence is over on the Johnson property on the edge of the 66-foot section line. And basically, it's just a cattle trail now.
Yeah, right.
Is all it is coming into the Johnson property.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have a question for Dan. Dan, I see the zoning currently requires a 32-foot wide paved driving surface in a, in a light industrial zoned area.
That's correct.
And, and since this is adjacent to the city, is, is the city involved any in whether or not we do what we're ultimately going to be asked to do here?
When we get the application, we will route it to the city. Right now, he can't even, we, in order for him to submit the application, he, we need engineered road construction plans. That's what he's asking to waive, just that requirement to submit the engineered road construction plans. Once he does that, it will come back before you. And then at that time, well, I, I will have received comments from all the relevant agencies, which includes the city of Rapid City.
So then we'll address that, whether or not he has to do it at the 32-foot paved surface, or whether he can go with the 24-foot, as I understand you want to go.
Correct, correct. That'll be what I'm going to ask for in the next segment of it, is that portion.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the engineered road construction plans required for submittal to construct the road. I'm not going to read that all the way through.
Your second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time this morning.
Next item is item 21, request to waive late charges from Mr. Gary Johnston.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Terry Quinn. I'm an attorney here in town. And my job this morning is to make sure that the Sugar Shack continues to serve Bubba Burgers. Seriously, this problem has been in front of the commission for over a year. And we're here this morning to ask you to waive the fine on the failure to get the variance straightened out. And if I may have just a moment to tell you, I think you all have a letter that Mr. Johnston sent. In 2002, this deck that has become the problem was built and no permit was ever issued. And then in 2003, apparently there was a complaint made with regard to this deck, and it fell through the cracks. Nothing ever happened. And the county never pursued it, and nobody else pursued it. And it was sold, and eventually that property was sold to another person. And then in 2006, Mr. Johnston bought the property, and still no action had ever been taken with regard to the building permit. In 2006, when Mr. Johnston came to get his license for beer renewed, that's when this building permit popped out of the woodwork again. And, and in fact, he did go ahead and pay for the building permit that was not issued way back in 2002. And then after that, he has paid the $90 for the building permit, additional $1,600 for the flood plain, and $1,300 for a survey. Now there's the cost of the variance, which is $370. Mr. Johnston has the zoning variance application, which I have in my hand, which is dated in January. He and Mr. Janison have been working closely together on this matter, and it was suggested that prior to putting the zoning, the application in where it should be, that we appear before you and ask if you would waive the $800 fine with regard to the variance. So that's why I'm here this morning, is to ask you if you would consider that, please. And, and we can finally move forward with this property and get some things straightened out. We have another issue with regard to parking that's being worked on presently. So it's important that we do it now because just a few days ago, Mr. Johnston was served with a complaint by the, by Pennington County, a summons and complaint with regard to these same issues. And I think if we can get these straightened out, we can eliminate a, a civil slash criminal trial and get it taken care of. So that's my request of the commission this morning, is to waive the fine on the variance, and then we can go forward with the application.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn, when your client purchased the property, was he aware that this was a encroachment or violation?
No, he was not, Commissioner. He, in fact, he had the title search done, and everything was done properly. And no, the answer is no. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, Mr. Chairman, we've always refused to deal with these things once a day. The state's attorney's office has filed a complaint, so I see no purpose reason in dealing with this one.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
For a couple of years, well, actually a lot longer than that, I've been saying that I didn't think that we should penalize somebody for something that somebody else did. And that's the thing that bothers me about this. It would be like a police officer driving down the street and saw one guy run a red light, and I'm behind him, so he stops me instead of the guy that ran the red light. And that's where I'm kind of headed with, with all of this. I just, I just don't like it that we penalize people for something that someone else did in the rear. And so that's, that's where I stand on the issue. Doesn't necessarily mean just this one, but we have several of these that have come before the commission in the last couple of years. And I always, I've always thought it was wrong to penalize other people.
Well, Mr. Chairman, there have been, has he done anything that we've asked him to do? It, it just goes on and on and on and gets postponed. And I see our former state's attorney gave him another six to eight months, and nothing ever gets done. He just sits there and keeps going.
Mr. Commissioner, I worked, I was, I was the one that reached the agreement with the state's attorney, the prior state's attorney. And we have done things, quite a few things, as a matter of fact, during the six to eight months. As far as the variance goes, the application was processed and ready to be submitted. However, in working with Mr. Janison's office and Mr. Grody, I've worked with him, and he's been very helpful also. And the, the only thing that seems to be holding everything up right now was we had to appear in front of the commission first with regard to the fine and the variance. And otherwise, everything that he's been asked to do, he's done.
Further discussion?
In order for him to proceed, to bring the property into compliance, he does need to turn in this variance application. And he did not want to submit that application, paying the additional $800. So if he gets the fees waived, he will submit the application to start the process of getting this property into compliance.
However, they've had six to eight months to do that, am I correct?
Yes.
And so we've gone past the deadline, and now we're dealing with it after the deadline?
Yes, but he did actually submit the application just a few days prior to the deadline. And that's when I told him that if you don't want to pay the fees, the additional $800, you need to go in front of county board.
When was that, Dan?
This, I believe it was... This was dated 1/30/13 was the date of the application.
I believe it was, it's in the memo that Patrick wrote, that it was February 4th, I believe. Or it's just a few days, I believe it was like February 2nd or 3rd, when he actually came to me with the application, the variance application. And I said, "In order for you to submit that, you have to pay the penalties, which is the $800, plus the normal application cost for the variance." And then he said, "I don't want to pay that." And I said, "In order to do that, you need to, or in order to waive those fees, you have to go in front of county board."
Commissioners, it's not the variance amount that we're talking about. It's only the fine. It's not the amount of the variance. He's willing to pay for everything but that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, let's see where it goes, get this, get this on down the road, make a motion to waive the fines attached to this item by Pennington County.
Is there a second? I'll second it for discussion purposes. Any further discussion on the motion and the second? Patrick?
Patrick Brody from the state's attorney's office. Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Buskewood, I, I provided you some background information because I, I figured it was going to come out that we were back in court about this. And I know that typically, the commission takes the position that once something's in court, you really don't look at it. And I, I appreciate that. In this particular case, in order to resolve these issues, Mr. Johnston does have to get this variance. I mean, that's, that will bring the property into compliance. So I guess I'd ask the commission not to really take too much note of the fact that we're back in court. That's, that's a separate issue that I'm going to have to resolve with Mr. Johnston. But I guess I'd, I'd appreciate a decision one way or the other from this commission so that he can move, move forward in getting his variance. I don't really think it's appropriate for me to take a position on whether or not the, the fee waiver is appropriate, because that's a matter completely within the commission's discretion. But, but I guess I'd, I'd say from my perspective, please don't hold the fact that I've got a, I've served him with a summons and complaint into account in making your decision.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote on them?
No.
Davis?
Yes.
Holloway?
Yes.
Troutman?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Items from planning and zoning, and that's scheduled for 10:30. And it's 10 after, eight minutes after 10. What do you, what's your wish?
Should we do it?
Anyone have a deck of cards?
Can we do it? Do we have executive session? Should we do executive session?
Your executive session is not available until 10:30 either. So you could jump down and do committee reports, items from the public. Hopefully, that'll fill the next 20 minutes.
Okay. Committee reports. Anyone? Oh, I do, Mr. Chairman. Yes. If, if you notice me limping around here, it's because I came back from a couple of committee hearings in Pierre. I got beat up pretty, pretty, pretty loudly. I, I think I did set a record. I said it's the first time ever that the sponsor of my bill backed out and testified against it. They've never seen it before. That was the TIF one.
Oh.
The fireworks one just got, it...
Blew up?
Blew up, yeah. And I, I, we decided to back the one that, that was a lot... And I, I, we decided to back the one that was a lot less stringent, but, and I don't even know how that turned out. The TIF one, they, they'd lose total, total sight of what I was trying to get at, and I don't, they didn't understand it. Maybe it was just I didn't explain it well enough. But after I presented it, we amended it to say, "All we want is a seat at the table. Give us some representation on the TIF committees." Well, the state got up, and the cities got up and said, "Oh, that's the end of economic development in the state of South Dakota. It will, it will never have another economic development project if the counties get involved," I guess. I said, "You know, we're not, I, I know a bunch of county commissioners throughout the state, and we're not stupid. We like economic development too, because it's good for us." But they just hounded, "Oh, there's $7 million," and there's, they, they didn't understand it. So I got thrown out, yeah, it got postponed to the 41st day, unfortunately. There isn't one. So, but as you know, the mayor of Rapid City was there, and I talked to him after the meeting for a while. And he, he says he wants to work on something with TIFs, so we'll see where that goes. I'm not sure.
I, I can tell you that I was at a meeting at City Hall, and he had a draft of a revision in the membership of the TIF committee that would be going through the process of amending city ordinance so that there would be additional commission representation. But I, I would comment that the, part of the reason things happened the way they did in Pierre is that very few people, including myself, fully understand TIFs. And it, it kind of lays in the same bed as the school aid formula. People talk about it, but they don't understand it. And anyway, just adding on to your...
You're absolutely right.
Yeah, other committees.
Well, just maybe a comment on the TIF. Perhaps what we need to do, too, is to be a little more explicit in how, if a TIF is granted, what that means to us financially. I mean, maybe we need to be more specific about it, because sometimes it's just really easy to grant a TIF, because yes, we do want economic development, and this seems to be a way to do it. But I don't know that we always really understand the consequences financially. They, we'll say, "Oh, yeah, it'll be paid back," and a lot of them are paid early, and all of that. However, the, the true financial consequences are not always really understood. So perhaps we need, as a county, to be more specific in, in getting that information to them.
I would agree with that, because there was a letter in the Two Cents column the other day that said that we've never voted to give them 1.8 million to the city for this, and, and they just absolutely had no clue what, what they were talking about.
Yeah.
Just, it was just a mystery to them.
Yeah. Maybe sometimes that communication is worth it.
Well, you know, the bottom line is that it's, it's a method of borrowing money.
Yes, it is.
And when an entity issues a bond issue, they pay it back. And for all practical purposes, this is nothing more than a bond issue with a whole bunch of different payment characteristics, and it's almost deceptive.
Yes.
So...
That's a good word put on, deceptive.
Anyway, other committee reports.
Mr. Chair, I had a juvenile services center compact board meeting last week, and just to let the board know that, that compact expires towards this, end of this year. And, and the, the board is looking at whether to renew that, or if some counties want to drop out. The way that compact was originally written, it was for 20 years, and, and it gave the right of renewal by the compact. So we'll be, the sheriff will be bringing stuff to us later on this year, and, and the compact will be meeting a couple more times this year to try to make a determination where we're going to go with that.
Will that compact impact our budgeting process time-wise or not?
Hopefully, I, we're hoping to get it resolved by budgeting. I mean, I think all the counties want that. All the other counties that are in it, they want to know where they're going to be for their budgeting cycle, and that's the timeframe, I think, that the sheriff has this on, so...
As you know, I mentioned an item in the last meeting about a Medal of Honor winner that's in the Leeds Cemetery, and just wanted to put it out there, that we have found the people that have this gentleman's original Medal of Honor. And I won't name any names, because they're scared to death somebody's going to try and break in and steal the thing. So, but they do intend on having it at the ceremony on June 22nd. Another item that I've had the privilege of being, being involved in is Black Hills Home Builders, starting a classroom, something, something similar to Leadership Rapid City. And this will basically be, and I don't know what they're going to call it, but basically be Black Hills Home Builders Leadership Class, you know, trying to hold it annually. I had the opportunity to be a speaker along with a member of Senator Johnson's staff, Senator Thune's staff, city council, the mayor, and a former legislator who was on appropriations. It went very well, and it was very informative. They had about 20 students there that took the first class.
Is that a class that's conducted several times, or just...
It'll just, it's going to be annually.
Okay.
So this, this class that I remember will be held, I think it's three times, and the one that I attended was the first one. Also, Military Affairs Committee of the Chamber is holding their monthly meeting coming up next, next week. And the sheriff is going to be there to give a presentation on security, along with Major Bennett from the base. And that'll be an interesting situation. I guess that's it.
Nancy?
You know, you go to several meetings, but one of the things that I think is important to bring before the board is that I sat in on the community health, Black Hills Community Health's review of some, what they did is they put out an RFP for contract builder kind of situation for a new building for Black Hills Community House, to bring everything under one roof. And we have been talking because of the close communication and interaction between Health and Human Services and Community Health, looking at jointly dealing with the same space. And so they did allow us to sit in, Don and I, on, on the review. They picked out four contractors. They had eight. It's a little different kind of, of, of way to build, because it is the contractor who is also designing as well as building. So there are four, three local and one out-of-town organizations that they're going to continue to review, and I'll just keep you updated on where they're heading.
I have one more thing. I find it kind of amusing and yet, yet disheartening that, that the city of Rapid City is going to decide that it's too dry inside of Rapid City to shoot fireworks. Yet the state of South Dakota and the legislature cannot see that it's too dry out in the county to shoot fireworks. That makes absolutely no sense. And, and a fireworks owner had a great comment in the paper. He said, "Well, we, they just want to drive the fireworks out in the county. We need to keep them closer into town where we have hoses." Now, that tells you something, doesn't it?
Any other reports? The committees I've sat in on have not done anything that would interact with the county other than the one economic development meeting where a free trade zone designation is continued to be pursued, and has a long ways to go. So we'll just see what happens. Let's see...
Motion to take ten.
Second. Motion and a second to take a 10-minute recess. All in favor, say aye. All the meeting back to order, and we need a motion.
Motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
Go ahead. Move motion in a second to go into a Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Good morning, Dan Janison, Pennington County Planning Director. Item A is a variance request, VA 1302 for Marcia Leidinger, to reduce the minimum required side yard setback from 25 feet to 20 feet in a low-density residential district in order to construct a deck on the north or northeast side of the residence. If county board approves this variance request, we would recommend that one condition be attached. It's located at 24180 Tin Horse Trail, approximately one mile east of the intersection of Highway 244 and 16, on a 6.69 acre lot, currently a zone-low-density residential district, which requires a minimum of a three-acre lot size. The residence on the property is currently under construction. The property does, is heavily forested, and it does consist of some rocky terrain. Certainly appears that the house could have been built on the property so that the deck could have been constructed, meeting the required setback. The house does meet the setback, it's the deck that will be encroaching into the side It's, you know, the lot is big enough, so it certainly could have provided for them to meet the required setback. This is a proposed deck. It is not built yet. The house is under construction. What else do you want to know?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm really tired of getting beat on my motions, so I'm going to make a motion to grant the variance.
You want to be on the winning side today, don't you, Dan?
If I die, for lack of a second...
I'll second that.
Thank you.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, my reasoning for that is because the Forest Service is on the one side, and they're not complaining about it. I guess I don't see much harm in it.
Do you still need a second for that motion?
We, we have one.
Don, hold that for a minute.
Yes? Dan, the, in the low-density residential, we still require 25-foot setbacks on side lots?
Yes. All property lines require a 25-foot setback in a low-density residential zoning district. And their minimum lot size is three acres, so, you know, typically, they can meet that setback fairly easy.
Thank you.
Now, just, just looking, looking forward, is there any way to foster some legislation that said that any deed that's issued has to have the setbacks identified on it, and the setbacks would be a no-build zone, so that we don't have to go through this all the time? Just say, "Do whatever you want within the 25 feet, but stay out of it."
Well, we could certainly look at an ordinance that would go that way, but I mean, the setbacks virtually do the same thing, that you're not supposed to build within that setbacks. And if you look at a suburban residential district, typically, when those are platted, you have an eight-foot minor drainage and utility easement, which you cannot build in. So it's, in regards to suburban residential district, it does restrict it. You'd have to go through another process if you wanted to build within that eight feet to vacate that minor drainage and utility easement. But in the case of a low-density residential district, it is a 25-foot setback if they want to build within that. That's why the variance process is here.
The, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I think the frustration for all of us is that, okay, we've got a new build here, and, and it could have been built in the correct area, and before it's even finished, we are dealing with a variance, because it's not meeting that 25-foot setback. And I, I think we all get tired of that, and we kind of like to figure out a way, I guess. Maybe that's not part of the motion, but just...
Mr. Chairman, no, but what is part of the motion is that the variance applies only to the portion of the side yard setback that will be encroached upon by the construction of the deck, and not the rest of the...
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. So if they wanted to build another structure that encroached into the setback, they have to come back before you for another variance request.
I, I understand that, but my point is that the house could have been moved just a little bit, and then we wouldn't have had to go through the variance process. And it just seems like there ought to be a way to make sure that people understand.
Mm-hmm. Since this is a unique motion, do you, do you want a roll call vote? Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? We have a second. Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Well, that was an enthusiastic bunch, wasn't it?
Yeah. Okay. Now we need to get out of the Board of Adjustment.
Make a motion to come out of a Board of Adjustment.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second to come out of a Board of Adjustment. Any discussion? Not those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda.
The Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and a vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on a regular agenda at the request of the board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Minor plat, PL 1302 for Hill Septic and First Interstate Bank, and this is to create Common Area 17 in Lot 47R, Block 1 of Canyon Springs Preserve. And Planning Commission recommended approval of the minor plat with one condition.
May I approve the consent agenda?
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Commissioner Bussgrude, your success here is greater than it was in Pierre.
Much. I wouldn't have pegged it.
Wasn't it putting salt in the wound?
No, I, I was just commending him.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, items from the public. Items from the public. Do we have executive session?
Take a motion to go into executive session.
Is there a second? A motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.